Good evening, everyone. Calling to order the meeting of the Town of Arlington Select Board. It is January 7th, 2019. It's a little after 7:15 PM. And we're in the Select Board chambers on the second floor of Arlington Town Hall. Brief introductions. To my right is Selectman John Hurd. I'm Selectman Dan Dunn. To my left is Selectwoman Diane Mahon. And to her left is, for the first time in her third return engagement, Selectwoman Clarissa Rowe. Welcome, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the Board and the town moderator for having confidence in me. As you know, I have no plans to run for the Select Board again. And I'm sorry to be here under these circumstances because I miss him.
We really appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Yes. I can't sing, by the way.[57.12][57.12](Laughter). Oh, I try. But I think Joe will be able to take that onerous task on.
Joe Kierro cannot be with us tonight. He called me or he texted me late in the afternoon. He was feeling unwell and went home from work, so I told him to feel better and not be here. We are also joined by Town Manager Adam Chapdulane, Town Council Doug Heim, and the woman whose title I always forget, Ashley Marr. Ashley, what's your title?
Admin Assistant.
Thank you. I apologize every time. I know.
It's okay.
First up, Arlington Jazz Banners, Dan Fox. Not here. All right, let's move on and see if he joins us later. Because I think part of the reason we put him there is for advertising purposes, so I wanted him to join us. Next up is Consent Agenda. We do everything on the Consent Agenda with a single vote unless someone on the Board wishes to pull one of them and make it a separate item. Our two items for today in the Consent Agenda are minutes of meetings, December 10th of last year and December 17th of last year, and a request for an all-day, one day, all-alcohol license for January 26th at the Town Hall for the Thompson School Parent Dance.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Hurd. And I'll actually note that there, I forgot that there was a correction to the minutes, which is, so we have an updated one on our desks. And Ashley, do you remember what the change was?
Yes. In the December 10th meeting, it was, one of the dockets had been withdrawn. One of the four, I think it was...
The contractor drain layer? One of those licenses?
No, it was, he had already put them up, the signs, the lawn signs. So they had been withdrawn.
So they deleted and they're not in here?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Ms. Rowe?
I will abstain from the minutes because I wasn't here.
All right, so let's do this as, any further to vote, quick discussion, let's do this as two votes. First, doing the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Abstaining, aye.
So 3-0-1 on that one. On the alcohol license, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0. Next up, Arlington Bike Advisory Committee, Maurice Kobashlia, Doug Mayo Wells. First Order Business, help me.
Can you go up?
Yes, please. Come on up. And why don't you please introduce yourself, teach me how to say your names, and tell us a little bit about why you're joining the committee and what you have to offer.
Okay, so I guess I'll go first. So my name is Maurice Kobashlia.
All right.
And I live on Torndike Street in East Arlington. Been an Arlington resident for about seven and a half years and definitely wanted to give back to community. And I thought that bicycle advisory committee would be a really good way to do that because I'm an avid cyclist. I do both recreational cycling as well as more of a commuting bicycling. And I have been attending the meetings for, I think, last year and a half or so, and found that it's a good use of my time. And I think, you know, through this committee, I have also heard that it's a good way to give back to the town. And hopefully, the measure of success will be that through some of the work that we do at the committee, you know, my kids will see an improvement in, I guess, different ways of transporting themselves to school potentially in the next couple of years. I don't necessarily have what you would call a directly relatable experience, but I think through some of the project managers that I've done, I've been within biotech sector for many, many years now and have been part of quite a few large projects. So I think some of that is certainly relatable to the work that hopefully we'll be doing on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Mayo Wells. Sort of a similar story. I've been an Arlington homeowner for 10 years, riding bikes in Arlington for five or six years, longer than that, and attending the ABAC meetings on an at-large basis for the last couple of years. I think I do consider myself sort of an experienced cyclist, if not an expert cyclist. And I want to work to make life better for people who are not expert cyclists and not experienced cyclists. I'm interested in improving the safety. I think that bicycle is an important part of Arlington's sort of transportation mix going forward, and I want to do my part to advocate for that to be safe and sane and respectful for all users of the road and the paths. I also don't have a lot of direct experience in the transportation arena, but I do have experience running and conducting and analyzing survey data and certainly happy to bring any of those skills to bear as appropriate.
Thank you. Any questions for the Board, for either candidate?
No, very impressive resumes, though. You may not have relevant experience, but very interesting work you both do.
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you both very much for volunteering. All those in favor, please...
Who made the motion? I don't think anyone did yet.
I can make a motion.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm asleep at the wheel. Ms. Rowe?
Yes, I'm moved that both gentlemen are appointed to the wonderful Bike Committee.
Second.
All right, now can we do the vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
I can pretend to be a helper, everyone.
That was absolutely helpful. Thank you very much. Acceptance of private grant donation. Farmer donation for opioid abuse prevention, Doug Heim, Council.
Skip Citizens Open Forum?
I sure did. I have like, Joe's not here and I'm like, I'm falling apart.
And Marie's watching it at home. You know her eyes are...
She's gonna be, yeah. Ashley, do you mind grabbing the clipboard that's out there? Because I saw there was at least one name out there. While she does that, I'll read. "Citizens Open Forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the Board shall neither be acted upon nor a decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. It should be noted, there's a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request." And so it looks like we've got at least four people. And so just if you're here to talk about something that's later on the agenda, feel free to pass and talk about it later on the agenda. But if you want to talk about it now, you are most welcome. First up is Kathleen Maloon. Welcome. If you want to come on up to the mic, introduce yourself and tell us what you...
Sure. My name's Kathleen Maloon. I live at 7 Webster Street. And the reason I'm here tonight is because my property tax bill went up 16% this year, 6% last year, which is a 22% increase in two years. I spoke with Paul Tierney today, the assessor's office, who basically told me this is based on sale prices in East Arlington. I also spoke with three of my neighbors who also had similar increases. One of them told me that Arlington Heights had little to no increase this year in their property taxes. Now, I have not fact-checked that. I'm just showing you what my neighbors are telling me. My family has lived in our house for over 40 years. Two of the neighbors I spoke to tonight have lived in their house for two generations. We're the people of the town who are volunteering. We're the people of the town who go and help with the polls. We're the people of the town who are at the food bank. We're the people of the town who are doing the food clinics. We're the people of the town who have been here for years supporting this town, okay? My hope was, in the next 18 months, to retire and to live in my house until I was no longer here. However, with this exorbitant rate of annual property tax increases, that's not going to be possible, not only for me, but for a lot of people who have been longtime residents of this town, support this town and love this town. So I'm here tonight because I want to bring this to all of your attention. This is an urgent matter. This needs to be addressed. This needs to be corrected. We all agree, and in talking to my neighbors, we all agree, taxes do have to go up periodically, annually, but 22% in two years, that's too much for us to take. It's too much of a burden. A one-time abatement, which Paul told me I could apply for, that's not going to help. We need to fix the problem. Also, there's no guarantee anyone's going to get that one-time abatement. So it seems like spitting into the wind, quite honestly, to try and even go through that process when I've just talked to multiple people, including the town manager, who's suffering with the same situation. One of my neighbors, a 19% increase. We need to correct that situation. We need to find a solution, whether it's generating other revenue, finding ways to cut the cost, writing to the governor, which is one of the conversations that Adam and I just had, talking with our senators, we've got to find a solution. We've got to find it fast. Because people like me who are going to be on fixed incomes can't manage this. My raise this year was just about 2%. Social Security did not give a 16% raise, did not give a 6% raise. A number of the people who are longtime residents here are living on fixed incomes. I'm going to be one of them pretty soon. We need to find some solution. We understand taxes have to go up annually a little bit to address this, but 16% in one year, too much. Exorbitant, unbearable. We need to find a solution. That's what 2.5 was about. We may have to go there again across the state, but I think as a town, we can look for solutions. We need to find a solution. So I'm hoping you can help with that. I have also contacted our town meeting person, Ted, to let him know I have this concern and my neighbors have this concern. I will be getting names. We will be bringing more information forward, but we need something. We need it fast.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I just want to say, I went on Friday night to some friends in Arlington Heights. They are having the same issues. And I had two neighbors both talking to me about the same thing in different ears. So it's not just East Arlington.
It might not be just East Arlington. If it's all of Arlington, it's even a worse problem. It's even a worse problem.
One of the things that I'm curious about, and I'm lucky in a way because I didn't set the tax rate, is could someone explain to me why the land, the tax on the land went up so much compared to the tax on the building?
Right. Quite honestly, just as a point of example, in one year, my land went up $186,000. Okay, I don't have gold for oil on that land.
So hang on. I'll be happy to give you another set, but one, I want, we've got to do it in order and do it appropriately.
Sorry.
There's also a little bit of a time limit about how far we're going to go. I actually don't know the answer to that question. Is there something, is that...
So I, I'll give a brief answer. I think we should have a future agenda item to talk about this because it is a really important issue. The general statement of what's been happening here is values are based on fair market value. That's in statute and has actually been backed up by case law over time in the state since the enactment of Prop. 2.5. This year's tax assessments are based on 2017 sales data to set what fair market value is. So 2017 was just another step in what has been the booming real estate market in Arlington and in surrounding communities. So what a number of properties have seen is this movement up along the lines of fair market value. And if there haven't been improvements made to the home, it's harder to justify increasing the home's value. But if sales in the neighborhood are at a certain level, increasing the value of the land is seemingly the appropriate thing to do if there, again, if there haven't been improvements made to the structure. So those are sort of the basics of it. I've had, I've asked Sandy to work, Sandy, the deputy town manager, to work with Paul for us to scope the issue a little bit more broadly, do some further research to be able to come back to the Board to talk more, more in depth.
And not to make an adjustment all in one year?
Sorry, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, not yet. I'll be happy to call on you in a minute.
Okay.
But I thank you because I think that that's something that I would like to understand. My, I live in East Arlington and my taxes didn't go up because I have no land. I mean, the value of my condo has doubled in nine years. But I'd like to understand it more, and I will. As your newest Select Board member, I will make sure that it's on a future agenda. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, no, I was just saying, maybe we could graduate it in.
I just want to make it clear, and I think this is probably your first time, unless my memory, and anyone else's, it's the first time, we really can't, under the open meeting law, we're kind of really pushing it right now, discuss it, because somebody sitting at home would say, hey, if I knew you were all going to discuss this, I would have been in there. That's not fair. So typically, what happens is, you know, we get the three minutes or so from there, Board members or the town manager says, we're already doing it, we'll put it on a future agenda, and that's pretty much it. So I just want to caution that we're getting a little, so...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Did you have anything before I go? Do you have anything or do you want me to? Okay. So I just had a few thoughts for you. One is, in terms of like, in terms of the actual assessment for your individual property, the assessor's office and the Board of Assessors is definitely the great, the right ones to talk. Statutorily, we can't change your individual house. That only happens down at the assessor. We are constrained by Proposition 2.5. And so our taxes go up by 2.5% plus new growth, except when we do an override. And what you're experiencing right now is when individual houses or neighborhoods run hotter or colder than everybody else. And so I think what I would really like to do, and is I would like, and I'm going to send an email after this meeting to Tom Tierney and see if Sandy and Adam can help, is trying to describe, like, show people like which, how many houses go up, how many houses go down and stuff like that. Because I think the people who are quote, you know, who get hit by an increase, you know, you feel it more than the people who didn't get hit, who just say, oh, look, you know, it was like, it was a better year for me. So our increase this year was 2.5% plus, do we have anything else that hit this year? Maybe a minute, a little bit of minimum amount.
Yes.
So it was a little bit more than 2.5% in the overall. And that, and then my final thought is, just in terms of like you talking about control, like spending and revenue just as a whole, I can, I totally agree with you, and it's what I spend two-thirds of my time as a Board member worrying about and trying to work on. It's an absolutely a big deal. So having had everybody have a go, you've gotten your three minutes. I'll give you a quick closing statement, but other than that, I want to move on, if that's okay.
But is there someone, I've talked to Paul, is there someone in addition to him that I can take my next step to? Because I do want to help push this forward to find some solutions.
Yeah, if I remember, are the solutions about your specific house or the overall?
No, for us all. My house too, but for us all.
So for us all, it's us, it's your 12, by the way, 12 town meeting members?
Yeah.
You're a member on the Finance Committee. These are all people to talk to.
So I started with Ted, so work with him. That's what you're saying.
Yep. I don't know who Ted is.
Ted's on Palmer Street. His last name is escaping me.
Yeah.
He's one of the town meeting people.
Okay. The good news is you have 12 for your precinct.
Yes, I know.
Okay, good.
I know, I didn't want to, you know, 12.
And also, I don't remember off the top of my head who your Finance Committee member, but that's also another person to bend their ear as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Next up is Amy Cohen. Welcome. If you could please introduce yourself and tell us what you have to say.
Hi, Amy Cohen, 101 Dow Ave. I also was going to echo the concern about the taxes. And again, just a statement, with our tax bills going up so much, and I live in Arlington Heights and we had a significant increase, the idea that we're going to have to have an override for that high school is going to be a huge, huge barrier for the town. And again, the fact that someone's, they keep proposing a $300 million school for Arlington, we do not need the most expensive high school in the state. I was involved with the PTOs for many years. I campaigned for overrides. I just don't see how that override is going to pass at $300 million in addition to the tax increases that we're getting. That's just a comment. Thank you. And my second is just a quick question, which, all the major things that we have to deal with in this town, this is a very minor thing, but to me, it's a little quality of life issue. Recently, all the utility poles were marked with an X after they got treated for insecticide. And to me, it's like graffiti all around town, looking at these poles with the white Xs all over. And I've talked to some neighbors who also kind of think it's kind of ugly. I checked my pole today and I wiped it off with water. It's just a little chalk paint. My question is, if we don't like seeing that X in front of our house, can we wash it off?
Doug, you look ready for that one.
So those poles are owned by Verizon and Eversource. They're not our property.
Right.
I don't think the town can counsel somebody to do something or not do something with the poles. I would say the town's experience with Verizon and Eversource, Eversource, yeah, with the poles has been that they have a fairly laissez-faire attitude. So I'm not sure, I guess what I would say is that I'm not sure if anybody were to wash the chalk marks off their pole that they'll expect to hear from Verizon about it.
Got it. Diane?
Yes, but can we clarify because, and we can call Jackie Duffy or somebody by tomorrow, my understanding is that they've come out and marked the X. I don't know that all that work has been completed.
Right, yes.
So, no, I have, what, they, Ms. Cohen was right. They were doing an inspection and insecticide treatment, and they were simply using the X to mark the poles that were done.
Yeah.
We confirmed that with Verizon.
Okay.
And when we confirmed that, we said, please stop doing that. And they said, we understand, we've been hearing from a lot of residents, we'll stop, we'll stop doing that. So I know, we've heard from a number of residents who were concerned it meant the poles were going to be taken down or that they were all damaged or whatever it might be. It simply meant that the inspection was done and they have moved on.
See, I thought you did that to me on purpose.
(Laughter).
So I can wash it off now, you're saying? Okay.
So I'd say your town manager's answer is probably your best one.
Excuse me?
I think the town manager's answer is the best one for your question.
Okay, then it's okay.
No further purpose for the Xs.
Okay, all right. So everything's been taken care of, okay. And I'm on the Arlington list. Is it okay? People have mentioned it on the list. Is it okay if I say that I came to the town meeting and if people want to?
Go for it.
Okay, all right.
I would say the town manager has informed me that.
Okay.
Yeah, go for it.
And I would, I guess the language I would recommend is...
Oh, okay, yeah.
The town, the town did not object.
Okay, the town did not object if you feel like washing off the X.
And our friends at Verizon are unlikely to go and wash off all the Xs.
According to the town attorney.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
All right, all right. Thanks again, small issue.
Thank you for coming.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Next up, Carl Wagner. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you could please introduce yourself and let us know what you have to share.
Hi, I'm Carl Wagner. I live on 30 Edge Hill Road, precinct 11, town meeting member. First of all, I wanted to thank the Select Board for doing what you do, and some of you are new, so there's a feeling as we start the new year of coming out to talk about our issues, but you're always here talking about our issues, so thank you. I came for two reasons tonight. The first is, I haven't felt that there is sufficient concern in town meeting level types of things, town management level types of things about the Arlington High School project. As the earlier speaker said, a huge expense is coming from Arlington High School's rebuild plan, and I just think we shouldn't support it now. We should put it off till later. Having tried to get the school committee to change the plan to make it more acceptable to the town, as you probably know, we have a Proposition 2.5 override of probably several million dollars, I don't know, 5, 10 or something. And I think we have a $24 million DPW project in addition to asking people to spend $900 or $800 for 30 years on top of the taxes they pay to this town. So that's a big issue. But what I didn't expect to be coming to ask for your support, or at least your consideration on tonight, is I, on December 13th, in connection with asking questions, why is the high school going to be so big? Why is it going to take up the open space that we had? I went to a CHOPA and MAPC meeting that was convened in Arlington. And it appears that we are asking at a town management level, we could be asking, I'd like you to maybe set me straight on that, to increase our density. And I hope people watching and people here remember that Arlington is the second most dense town in the Massachusetts, I almost said United States. It is also the ninth most dense community of all towns and cities out of 350-plus towns and cities. So I'm very surprised that Arlington might be thinking that we, the residents, want to increase density. I certainly don't. Of course, trying to find uses for things like the old Sims Hospital project, sure, whatever. And when I voted in town meeting in 2015, I think, for multi-use massed properties, we thought we were going to get the Regent or the Capitol. We do not want to get that building that's between Stop &amp; Shop and the Arlington High School building. It is a disaster. The wife of the builder contacted me and said she was offended that I said it's a disaster. It's not the builder that's a disaster, it's the laws that allow, or the ARB override that allows a building right on the street to go way up and offend us to make us into a city. So I'm asking you, as friends, as people, rather than the nameless people in a city government, we're a town, let's remember that. I've lived here a long time. I know many of you have also. So I hope that we will, we will consider a better project for high school. You know, it's the right question, what do we do for the high school? It's the wrong answer. And I certainly hope you'll agree, we do not want to be a city. We do not want to increase our density at any cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, Paul Peres. Welcome.
How are you?
Could you introduce yourself and share?
Yes, I'm Paul Peres. I live on Hemlock Street. I've been a longtime Arlington resident. And I wanted to come here tonight to offer some comments. I certainly don't expect any of these questions can be resolved quickly or easily. But I've been aware of the multifamily, higher-density initiative in town. And I went to the first CHOPA meeting, and I listened to what was being said at this meeting. And it was a strong emphasis on increasing affordable housing in town, which I support. I think that's really needed in the area. However, one concern I had about that meeting is it was run mainly by the CHOPA people. Why it was not run by people in our town, I'm not quite sure. They, as CHOPA, have their own agenda, their own statewide initiative and so forth, and I think we're happy to listen to what they say. But I'm not sure we're happy to have them run our meetings. They're having a forum that comes up January 10th. They're running that one. I'd rather see our own town officials stand up and take the initiative and run that. Second, they went through a complete detailed list of recommended zoning changes. They were very specific. They'll be happening, I think, in the R3 or the R7 districts. These zoning changes, I don't know how they were developed. I don't know how much transparency there has been with these, but I do have concern about that. At the end of the meeting, I asked a specific question. If we implement these zoning changes townwide, in the long term, how much or how many affordable units would be built? What would be the maximum effect of these zoning changes on affordable units? I got the reply that they were doing that, they'll have a number, they didn't have it[1614.83] tonight. I said, will you have it by the forum, which is January 10th? They said, yes. They said, we'll have it by the next redevelopment meeting, which was a few days later. I went to that, and there was no discussion of how many affordable units. In fact, the ARB meeting gave a strong emphasis on business development, that we're doing all these zoning changes for business development, not for affordable units. So I'm a little confused. I think the town needs to create more transparency and develop stronger leadership within the town for what we're really trying to accomplish. One of the zoning changes I saw had nothing to do with R3 to R7 units, zones, it had to do with R0 to R1, and that's accessory units by right. This came out of the blue to me. I have no idea why we would be doing this if we're looking for increasing affordable housing or increased business development. And there's been no specific discussion. I'm not in favor of accessory units by right, unless there are very specific regulations. They can't be turned into Airbnb units, they can't be turned into full-blown second-story units with independent entrances. There's a whole slew of questions that I don't see addressed. Now, the biggest concern I have, and I asked at the meeting, the first CHOPA meeting, was you have all these zoning changes, and our town meeting is two and a half months away. How do you expect to explain this to everyone and get them to vote? When we've had prior zoning changes in the past, at this point in the season, they're being brought up to be discussed at the town meeting a year and a half, a year and a quarter in front. So I'm really confused that the town wants to rush all these zoning changes through in two and a half months. For what effect, I'm not sure, but overall, that's my general concerns. As I said, I don't have any real expectation that anyone here can answer that now or think about it, but I wanted to raise these concerns, and I'm going to be asking others as we go forward the same kind of questions, because without answers, I think we're rushing into this for some reason that's not clear to me. That's about it, as a summary.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If the chair would indulge me briefly, I, one point I really strongly want to make is that event that was, CHOPA was included in, I was there and I opened up the meeting, and I think nearly the entire planning department staff was there and involved in the session, so describing it as though it was completely entirely facilitated by the one CHOPA staff member is really an unfair description.
Most of the time.
Also, talking about a lack of transparency, when this process was kicked off with a public meeting, with 50 people who live in town in attendance to discuss these issues as a kickoff and lead up to multiple ARB meetings, the wider forum on January 10th, that will lead to further ARB meetings, ultimately a hearing process before the ARB to decide whether or not any recommendations will ultimately be made, to then be heard by town meeting, I think is the definition of transparency. So I thank you for indulging me, but I just think it's very unfair and inaccurate to describe the process as lacking transparency.
Well, that's not, that was not...
Sorry, we're going to only let one, was there a select board member wanting to go? Okay, oh, sorry.
I would just say, we're relatively new to instituting the mixed-use law that was developed a couple of years ago. The planning department, to my knowledge, has had many events that pertain to the mixed-use law, from the one that you're talking about to even those one in Arlington Heights with, with Arlington Heights residents and businesses to try to redevelop Arlington Heights. We have two conflicting ideas that have been the general themes of this meeting, is that taxes are going up, and then there's a couple of people that have talked about the mixed-use laws. The mixed-use is a way for us in Arlington where everyone knows Prop Two and a Half constricts us to 2.5% plus new, new growth. We have very little opportunity to new, for new growth, so a lot of people in the anticipation of the tax hikes have reached out to us about exploring new ways to bring revenue into the town, and we as a town are developing this, and like I said, it's new and we're still, with the new developments that have been the first few examples of it, we're gauging reaction from town residents to see if they like them. I actually, the development on Mass Ave that was spoken about, I like it, I think it, I think it looks nice, I think it serves its purpose, and I think it adds to that part of the town, so. And we just have to keep that in mind as we work through this law. We're trying to add new revenue to the town to help lessen the impacts of some of the tax increases that we're going to see in the next few years.
Okay. Anything really brief to finish up? Or we're going to...
No, no, thank you. I appreciate your attention.
Okay.
My intent was not to disparage the process or any individual within it, so I apologize if that was the case.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted to just raise my concerns.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who's talked on Citizens Open Forum? Seeing none, Citizens Open Forum is closed. Sorry, who? I think, oh, did you? See, I thought Ted wanted, yeah. Ted may have wanted to engage in a colloquy with a previous speaker. Oh, did, were you here? Did you want to speak under?
Sure.
Other than, yes, now is your moment. If you could introduce yourself, welcome, if you could introduce yourself and share what your thoughts are.
Yes, my name is Ted Peluso. I'm a resident of this town, and I'm from precinct number six. I'm on town meeting. I've had a career of over 30 years analyzing, accounting, and different things that towns should be doing. And I was asked a while ago to join a committee to try to understand whether or not the Arlington High School should be rebuilt now, and based upon that time, I analyzed everything that I could possibly analyze on both websites. The website that was provided by the town, the school building group, and the website that was provided by the group that wants to save the present high school. I happen to like the looks of the present high school. The rest of the building is a disaster. The building needs to be rebuilt. It needs to be rebuilt now. You guys should vote for a debt exclusion, town meetings should vote for a debt exclusion, and the citizens of this town should vote for a debt exclusion. We should also consider ways to, to deal with the increase in property taxes that come along with that, and I've talked to some people who seem to have some pretty good ideas, and I got a few myself, which I was pleased to spread among several people that might help to ameliorate the cost. But here's where you are. The Massachusetts School Building Authority has provided $13.5 billion of support to schools in this state, and I don't come from the state. It also, believe it or not, audits how the money is spent, which I find amazing. So if the town, for some reason, feels that it's spending the money in, if it's felt that it's spending it incorrectly, you know what? You're not going to get the money that you think you're going to get. Unfortunately, and I will tell this to the school building group, and I've already mentioned it to a couple, the presentation of the cost of this has not been properly reflected. They keep talking about $308 million and $800 for a homeowner. You know what? First of all, it is not $308 million. You're going to get approximately $100 million, I'm told, from the state. And I have to tell you, in all the years I've been dealing with municipalities, including working for one as chief financial officer, I cannot imagine a situation where a town and its officials decides to say, I don't want the $100 million.
Ted?
And that is the risk you run.
Ted, we tried to limit to three minutes, and you're at four, so if you want to wrap it up, if you could.
Okay, my wrap it up is, please pass whatever you're going to discuss tonight on the debt exclusion. Please plan the strongest possible approach to getting town meeting to approve it, and also please plan the strongest possible approach to get the residents to approve it. It makes sense now.
Thank you. I will offer one thought, which is, so for, especially in terms of the ballot question, people such as us will be important, but volunteers are even more important. And so I'm sure that we can count on you and many, many, many others for helping out on that ballot campaign. All right, I closed, tried to close Citizens Open Forum once. I will now see if I can do it a second time. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in Citizens Open Forum? Nobody's moving, I swear. All right, Citizens Open Forum is closed. Next up, item number five. For approval, Transportation Advisory Committee recommendations to establish a speed safety zone on Herbert Road at the entrance to Magnolia Park. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Howard Muse. I'm chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee, and I live at 29 Grafton Street. This project, or this recommendation, comes out of some work that was done a while back when the recreation department was planning the rebuild of Magnolia Park, and they requested the TAC to look at the possibility, or to evaluate, the potential of installing a raised intersection at the intersection of Herbert Road and Magnolia Street, which is at the entrance to the park. We reviewed that, and the cost of the raising the intersection was very high, at about $100,000. Turns out that all the catch basins are located right at the corner. There's a number of utilities in the middle of the intersection, so that just boosted the cost much higher than one would have expected. So we did not make a recommendation that that be installed. And about the same time, the state was changing the regulation, or changing the law regarding speed limits. And as you all are aware, we went through and changed the default speed limit in town to 25 miles an hour. Another feature of that law was that the town could also designate speed safety zones, where the speed limit would be 20 miles an hour. And this would be for areas with sort of special populations where a lower speed limit might be appropriate, such as the entrance to a park, senior housing, even the high school, because that's not covered by the school zone regulations, and other facilities like that. And so the application we're looking at right now is actually specifically referenced in the law. We went back and we looked at the existing speeds in the area and the volumes, and it's, there's a table on the second page which shows that what we call the 85th percentile, which is all car, 85% of cars are traveling at that speed or lower, that speed is often used to set speed limits, and it's used so that the speed limit is realistic compared to what, the way people drive. And in this case, it was, the 85th percentile speed was 25 miles an hour eastbound and 23 westbound. The DOT has given us some direction that it is appropriate to put in the reduced 20 mile an hour speed zone in a location where you would not be setting the speed limit at more than about 5 to 7 miles an hour below the 85th percentile. We're clearly within that range here. It is the entrance to the park, which, there's a playground right there, the Magnolia Garden area is nearby, and of course, there are playing fields, closer to Thorn Dyke Field. So the, we felt that this would be the first location where we're designating a speed safety zone in the town. We are looking at another location as a result of some work we did on Jason Street to look at the entrance to Monotomy Rocks Park. We did that work a while ago, so we need to go out and redo traffic counts and speeds, but that, we're looking at as potential second location. So the recommendation is for a speed safety zone on Herbert at Magnolia Park entrance.
Thank you. Ms. Rowe?
Of Herbert Road. I move approval. Second.
Any discussion? I actually have one thought, which is just to, one of the, I, with the ability to set specific speed zones, we, it's like, it is, it could be a Pandora's box when we change it, of course, you know, like, anyone who is unhappy with their traffic situation could be here. The thing that I really like about this proposal is you have a very specific criteria associated with it, which is related to the parks, like, specific housing and categories that say, okay, it's appropriate to do it in these places, it's not appropriate.
Yes.
And the fact that we have that criteria makes me much more comfortable.
That's actually in the law. I mean...
Look at that. The state making it easy for us.
Yes.
So I just want, I did want to comment that that, for me, that, that is of immense importance for me, my support of this.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
And the Herculean, squarely behind this, solidly behind it, agree with the chairman and Ms. Rowe's remarks. I sort of look at kids, schools, walkers, it's 20 miles an hour, it's within the percentile. But the Herculean part of this is the town manager working with the police department with the limited resources we have. I think if you talk to people who live down there, or even talk to the traffic enforcement officers, that there's certain time periods when these speeds are being achieved, and I know we can't do it all year long, but maybe if you could talk with the appropriate people in the police department to say, we're going to set a goal of five times. And I'm just saying a number, it might not be five, it might be something else, but like, you know, you know, first week of school, you know, first crazy rainstorm, you know, maybe not a snowstorm, because you can't, but, but I'd leave it to you to have that conversation.
That's a good suggestion.
I think that's a good idea. There is often a policeman at the other end of Herbert Road, and he could maybe switch his times. I mean, it's, it's very much a cut-through, because people don't want to go down Mass Avenue, and the rush hours before school, sort of the 7 to 9, and the rush hour on the way back, like, 4:30 to 6:30, I think would be good times for the police to look at it.
As a goal.
As a goal, yeah. Thank you.
All right, so we had a motion by Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mr. Hurt, if I remember. No, seconded by Mrs. Mahan, I apologize. Any further discussion?
It could be Mr. Hurt. No, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, now I've somehow magically skipped down earlier. Now we're getting to the acceptance of private grant donation, pharma donation for opioid abuse prevention. Town Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This organization, Pharma, has awarded Arlington a grant of $20,000 to the Arlington Police Department in partnership with the Arlington Public Schools to develop a opioid abuse prevention program targeted primarily at middle school students. With the, if the board is so inclined to accept this grant, I'd have the board take a vote to, first, accept the grant, and, second, to establish the appropriate accounts to receive and govern the expenditure of such funds.
Move to accept grant?
Second.
Motion, yes, and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and thanks to them for their donation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make sure to pass that information along to the police chief in the schools.
Thank you. Next up, discussion update, police chief recruitment strategy, interim strategy, town manager Chaplain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to talk with the board about two matters tonight, one being the provisional promotion, or temporary promotion, to put somebody in place to serve as chief after Chief Ryan retires this upcoming Sunday, and then a further discussion about a search or a process for recruiting and searching for a full-time replacement or a permanent replacement for Chief Ryan. So on the first score, I think the, I've made the board aware, but wanted to talk about it at a public session, that we are pursuing making what is called, under civil service law, a provisional promotion, and to do so, we are interviewing all captains and lieutenants who have expressed an interest in serving, all current, internal captains and lieutenants who have expressed an interest in serving as police chief. We can call it acting chief, for lack of a better term, but again, the technical term is provisional promotion. I've interviewed about half the candidates, and I'm finishing up the remainder tomorrow, and hope to have a decision about who the acting chief will be shortly thereafter, so we can have somebody in place before Chief Ryan retires on, on Sunday. Want to pause there for any questions about the provisional process, or?
Well, maybe a long-range question, or maybe it'll be another meeting. How long do you expect that interim provisional appointment to last, which is really asking, I guess, about the process?
It is, it's actually a good...
So is that the next thing?
It's a good segue question, if that's okay. So, I would anticipate, depending on this conversation and further conversations, that this person would be in the acting capacity, the provisional capacity, for probably about a year or more's time. And that is because, as I was interested the last time that Chief Ryan was potentially leaving the role, I'm interested in exploring removing the role from civil service. So to do so would need this board putting a warrant article in the warrant for annual town meeting, town meeting approving that measure to remove the chief's position from civil service, and then having the legislature approve that once, once a home rule, a piece of home rule legislation was filed by the town, if town meeting was to approve it. So we know the timeline of town meeting going through April, and then getting it up to the legislature, it could, takes an indefinite amount of time. It could move quickly, it could take a little bit of time. So I've been talking about this in terms of potentially having someone in the acting position for about a year. Why I am recommending that the town consider moving the police chief's position out of civil service is really twofold. One, I think it opens up and provides more flexibility in the hiring process. It allows us to look at both internal and external candidates. It allows us to look at a deeper pool of internal candidates. We can go below the lieutenant rank, would there be any interested candidates who are below the lieutenant rank? But again, also lets us go more broadly and look at people who are working outside the department. And whether or not we would hire from internal or external is not really the purpose of me making the recommendation, but rather being able to go through a search where, whether we hire internally or externally, we have a better feeling that we have searched for the best candidate to serve as Arlington's police chief. On the other side of that equation, and perhaps for me, the more important side in protecting Arlington's best interests, is removing the civil service protection that a chief has in their employment. Civil service protections are quite strong, and were there to be any significant disagreements between this governing body or the town manager with the chief, civil service would make it very difficult to take an employment action against the chief, or change, or solve that disagreement with the police chief. I don't anticipate us having, I've been using the term rogue police chief, but I think it's... it's, bad hires can happen now or in the future, and having the town not be protected, in my opinion, by not having those civil service restrictions, I think, is an important matter. So being able to both recruit on the front end of a wider pool, but then when someone is in the job, being able to manage that person and hold them more accountable to the wills of the governing body of the town, through the town manager, I think, combined is an appropriate step to take. The only other thing I'll add is, the ranks of civil service chiefs are dwindling in the state. There's only about sixty left in the state communities that have civil service chiefs. Many have been moved out of civil service status and are called contract chiefs. So that's sort of, that's where, that's where my head is at. One additional thing I'd like to add, that I didn't include in the memorandum I provided to the board, but I think is important context. Chief Ryan, obviously, or, maybe not everybody knows this, but Chief Ryan was hired from outside of the Arlington Police Department. He had been a police officer rising up through the ranks of the Concord Police Department, though born and raised in Arlington, got a start in policing in Concord, and was able to come to Arlington through an external process. So some will say, well, Arlington once took it out of, the position out of civil service and then put it back in. What actually happened was, the administration at the time had created a position called Director of Police Services, which was not the chief's position. And the good news is, it enabled us to hire Fred Ryan at that time, and we got the benefit of Fred being the chief for the past almost twenty years. What then happened was, it became clear that the Director of Police Service positions was likely not a lawful position, because it was not a chief, and it wasn't not a chief. So the town was then, had, the town then asked town meeting to reaffirm the civil service status, because it had never voted to remove the chief from the civil service status back, back in those days. So the town meeting did vote to then reaffirm that it was a civil service position, and Chief Ryan then gained civil service status. So I think that, I think it's important to mention that we're not flip-flopping, because the town never has before removed it from civil service, civil service status per se. So I guess the thing I'm asking for after any discussion would be the board's support in filing the necessary warrant article for this annual town meeting warrant.
Diane?
Chilling at the bit. Some of that's a benefit, risk-benefit analysis of sharing your information. I'm going to have to disagree with the town manager, having sat on the Board of Selectmen during Chief Ryan's hiring, and subsequently being voted back in as a civil service chief. Yes, it was a director before that, because, and I say this to other people, with all due respect, these remarks, I've come to learn over the years, sort of what I call the nature of the beast of the town manager, is to try to, you know, get everything under him or her, and that's where that then-town manager, we got a community safety building, and we got director positions. And I will say, obviously, I'm adamantly opposed to this. In my opinion, when you take it out of civil service, and curiously enough, I had the same conversation with the then-Board of Selectmen, none of who you were on, same thing from the town manager, and I gave the same arguments I'm going to give now. We did get Chief Ryan, but then a couple of years later, we did give him civil service protection, because, A, it gives that layer of protection to either chief, that he or she is not at the political mercy whims of a majority of the Board of Selectmen, who, and I'm not saying this board would do it, but I sat on the board at a time when politicians got involved in a very sensitive police issue, and I can tell you from sitting here, and there was a lot of four-one votes then, that the, the front face was, oh no, of course the town manager, you know, doesn't listen to a majority of the Board of Selectmen. Yes, the town manager does, especially when it's on something sensitive like that. This town manager can disagree. And I saw the fiasco that came out of that, and not just the police morale, which, in the end, the prevailing wishes of the then-colleagues I sat with, the then-town manager did a one-sixty and said, no, we have to stop this. And, and the town suffered as a community from that for many years, close to a decade, not just police morale, but town, and the trust that had been established was discord. And so, to me, taking this position out of civil service, I'm not saying do it open civil service, you know, you can have other civil service chiefs come in here. When, when is, that, that protection of having the civil service status, I think, is vitally important. Now, the case in point, the town manager said, oh, well, if we have a police chief and he or she is untouchable, no, that's not true. And that ties into my segue of, you know, why, why would you take it out of civil service? Well, most cities and towns that have done that, usually, Stoughton, et cetera, there's been like a Rico corruption, there's real serious problems with the police department. The town manager and select board really don't like the way that the police department is being run, and I don't think any of us would say that. I think we herald Arlington Police Department, the initiatives that it has, et cetera. A second reason to, and the same thing would apply if we had a police chief that acted so haenously, they, they're not, you know, Teflon, they, they still can be, you know, if it gets into a matter of politics, and I'm not saying this town manager, hypothetical, police chief, he or she takes a position that feels is the best way for the department to go, three or four or five of us feel really strong the other way. And I've seen it happen in the past. I'm not, not be, you know, everyone says, oh, Pollyanna, and things like that. I've seen it happen, and I've seen the detriment. But the second reason to take it out is, and I think the town manager is aware of this, because he cites it in his memo, this is basically a blow to the qualified candidates, men and women, I can think of four, and at least one is a woman, that have worked their way through the ranks in Arlington Police Department, and whether it's intentional or not, perception is the reality. This is a message coming from this board, or a majority of this board, that the, what the town manager is asking, that we're saying, we don't see one qualified candidate over there at the Arlington Police Department. Because that's what it is, in my opinion. And I, you know, I really think you should weigh, in terms of what you're saying to the police department, that we say is run so well, that, of course, we have qualified candidates over there. And then the last point I would make is, I feel, if this went through, I would anticipate, and of course, vote for in the future, I think this is sort of an end run to a different agenda. We took it out, we got the current chief we have, and then the very same arguments I'm making here tonight, that I made way back then in the nineties, and it's on tape, it's on camera, were then used to me to say why we need to put Chief Ryan in a civil service position. We need to give him that protection, so if he does have to make a tough decision. So I certainly wouldn't support this. I, I'd be happy to say, open civil service process, which opens it to any civil service chief, not just in police departments, if it was a comparable, that the town manager or the assessment center deemed appropriate, say it's MBTA, say it's, you know, NSTB out of Massport, or whoever, if they had that. I don't, I don't know that, that Massport, Massport would, NSPPA wouldn't, MBTA could and should. So I'm adamantly opposed to taking it out of civil service. And I've been here, I've done this stance before, so. I wouldn't be voting, I wouldn't be making a motion to do that. I would make a motion, but I want to see, if the rest of my colleagues are somewhere else, I'm not going to put a, my motion would be, which I won't make, to civil service open competitive.
Ms. Rowe?
I respectfully disagree. I have lived through the same incidents that Mrs. Mahan is talking about. I luckily was not on the board during that time. I've also, in my long career doing nonprofit management, and my firm, I have always wanted to have as, an open pool as possible for the candidates. I completely agree that we, this should not be seen as a step or a slap in the face for our existing police leadership, because I think we have some really outstanding people. I can think of two, one a woman, one a man, who I would be delighted to have be our chief in the future. But I think the, as open a pool as we can get is a very important qualification for this town that needs the kind of forward-thinking leadership that Fred gave us, with an ability to work with the men and women of the police force in a more positive way in the future. And I just want to open it up. I think that's what you do in business, I know this isn't a business, and as I've said, this is no slap in the face for anybody that's working here now. I think we have really outstanding people, and I want to give them a chance. But they're going to feel better if they're chosen from a bigger pool than from a little pool. And that's just the way I think in, in my life, and I completely respect your position, but I don't agree with that.
Todd?
I guess I'll go for one in favor, one against, to one, I'm not convinced. To me, some of the arguments sound good, but I like the idea of recruiting from within. I think Arlington Police Department is a shining beacon of police department in the area, and it's often cited in the news as things that Arlington has done. I think there's a lot of great candidates that we see. I think when can, with people that come up through a police department, know that the next, next chief position is going to be opened up to the general public, that it can spur people to want to move on to somewhere bigger and better things, without staying with the department in the long run. We just did this, it sort of reminds me of the discussion we had about the finance department and the treasurer, where Dean came in and said, there's no mobility for people in these different pockets of the finance department. So to, I think we have great candidates, and i-if it was the situation where we sat here right now, where we're having issues with the department, or we didn't have anyone that stood out as candidates, that it would be a different story. Also, to echo something that Diana said, to me, the, to have a police chief that is completely separate and somewhat guarded from any political process, I know where the politicians put this political pressures on everyone that works in town government. So that is something that I look for in a structure, is that the police chief can run the department and make the decisions based on what's best for the town and what's best for the officers. So, I mean, I'm not adamantly against it, it just, it doesn't, from where I, where we sit right now, it just doesn't seem to me that something that's necessary.
So, I'm, I'm with, I, I, I support the town manager's move to take it out of civil service. There's a couple examples that I come to mind, that I want to think, that I was thinking about. One is when we hired the town manager himself. He was an excellent deputy town manager, and we could have promoted from within and just given him the job, but instead we threw it open to an open process, and we reviewed dozens of resumes, and we narrowed it down to a shortlist, and we had three people who came in for all-day interviews, and maybe it was only two by the time, anyway, but anyway, we had an open process. We got to someone that we were, you know, very happy with, and I think that the town has really benefited from that choice. Another flip of that coin is when we hired the treasurer most recently, there was at least one internal candidate that I can think of, and there may have been two, and we considered, but we had an open process, and in the end, we picked somebody who wasn't an internal candidate. And I think that the town is, you know, I think we, we got a stronger treasurer because of it, though I'm sure that the internal candidates who were frustrated with it. I'll also just say that broadly, that I've, I'm, I have a long, the civil service of Massachusetts needs to be reformed. It is completely, like, the preference system that it has created is unworkable and hidebound, and it's, the physical requirements and the assessment centers it runs, I just do not think are functional. And I, well, I respect what the civil service law is meant to do. I think that it is a, it is, it is doing a disservice to both the town and everyone, and all the employees across the state with its current implementation. And so I will, if there's, I don't know if we're going to get to anywhere beyond two to two tonight, but if we do...
I'll make a motion when it's appropriate.
I'm definitely going to be, I'll be happy to support the manager's motion. Mrs. Mahan?
I guess in the spirit of compromise and trying to achieve my goal, which is, one of the benefits I didn't articulate, with the civil service chief, whether he or she is from the Arlington Police Department and has worked his or her way up through the ranks, or from another city, town, or comparable entity that has civil service chiefs, I equate it to, when you go in to a surgeon, a specialist, you, you can go in, and if you say, oh, we'll just open it up to everybody, have all parameters across the board, you run the risk, because in the end, the town manager has the decision. If you open it up, in the end, do you want the surgeon that basically went through med school, internship, no fellowship, couldn't pass the board, oral boards, but can still practice as a physician? No, you want the physician that did all that, had a fellowship, passed, they're written in oral boards, and recertified every ten years. That's a similar protocol that I equate to a civil service chief. Not only have they worked their way through the ranks, there's also certain standards and trainings that are universal amongst all those civil service chiefs, as well as code of conduct. So, in the spirit of a compromise to, because I'm, I feel very strongly about the civil service status, because this isn't just, oh, open it up so we can get a great pool of candidates. Once you take it out of civil service, that chief, he or she, is going to be, my personal opinion, and I've lived through it, subject to the political, on a sensitive issue, I've seen every Board of Selectmen, except for this one, because we're brand new, weigh in on it, and basically, has, as it's always been said to me, the town manager needs to count the votes. And once it gets to three, that's the decision. And I don't think that's a decision that the citizens of the town, the employees of the town, that's not the way they want to see decisions like that made. And that's what the civil service protection provides, that if, you know, Chief Smith makes a decision, three, four, five of the selectmen said no, and the manager relayed that. With civil service protection, his or her job is going to be uncomfortable, but his or her job is secure, because they did the right thing. And by and large, that's what the community wants. Versus, if they don't have civil service protection, and three, four, or five of us disagree with something because we're getting political pressure, that chief, whether fire or police, has no protection and can be fired at a political whim. And I've, I've seen that process happen in the past, I don't again. So I would make a motion, in the spirit of compromise, to support the civil service open competitive, which would, you know, police, Arlington Police Department plus other civil service chiefs, and/or the other criteria that the manager's outlined for civil service employees that can apply within from Arlington. So there'd be quite a wide pool from that. So that would be my compromise. I'd make a motion for civil service open competitive.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I mean, that sounds...
So, I got to stick with this. If they, I'm going to act on a second, and then I think, and then Adam was asking to talk, so. If you want a second for the purpose of discussion, that would be...
I'll second.
All right. So we've got a motion by Mrs. Mahan.
Back to the beginning, where I can...
Second, uh, second by Mr. Hurt. Is it okay if I, Adam had put himself in queue?
So I, I guess, based on the motion, I wanted to say two things, one before the motion, one after the motion. I think multiple board members have talked about the importance of maintaining morale and the possibility of upward promotions from within the department. And I, I also feel very strongly about that. And I can think of two separate occasions that, from what you described, Mr. Dunn, of me making the decision to promote from within for a department head-level position in the past couple of years, but then also making a difficult decision to promote, to hire from the outside, even though there were internal candidates, with sort of the mutual objective of both of those being hiring the best candidate for the job. And I think that, in this situation, I'm sitting here tonight, and I've said this to every candidate who's interviewed for the provisional promotion, and I've said this to the leadership of both the ranking officers' union and the patrol officers' union, and I mean it, I want to hire from within the department. Ultimately, the goal of hiring the best person, I want to meet up with hiring from within the department. But I think to convince myself and to convince the community that we have ultimately hired the best person to serve as Arlington's police chief, having a wider pool is what gives us that opportunity. So that's, that's why I'm, I'm here tonight asking for the consideration. On the point of the open competitive...
Can I ask a quick follow-up question? That, of, of the, you cited... That, of the, you cited that you hired two people of your en-scheduled department heads. I can think of one. Who's the second?
Well, I said I had one from within, one from without. The within...
Oh, then you misspoke. You said you've hired two, and then, so you've hired one. What I'm thinking, thinking of your past, like, eight department head positions, including this one. Because I've heard this from staff also, and a lot of people are very frustrated. Because we say one thing, and history shows we do another. I can think of one person, and I don't even know if he was hired from within, but he lived in Arlington. Because the word's getting out there, if you live and or work in Arlington, don't apply for any department head position. And I'm thinking of Mike Radamaka, so...
So Mike Radamaka was hired before I was town manager.
Oh, okay, so...
But no, I mean, internal, recent internal were Andrew Nicolai and Jim Feeney. So there's two very recent internal hires, promotions. Andrea Nicolai and Jim Feeney were both promoted to department head positions from within. On the question of open competitive, I don't ever like it when it comes to this point. It, the board's vote of which civil service process, it's not the board's vote to follow which civil service process. And I wouldn't sit here tonight, regardless of how the board voted, to absolutely follow open competitive. If we don't decide to go forward with pursuing removing it from civil service, I think I'd want to still give it further consideration of whether or not pursuing traditional civil service or open competitive was the right thing to do. Thank you.
I cut you off, Mr. Hurd.
No. I just, there's two things, ways to look at this, is the hiring process and how it operates. And to me, I just, the police chief is one of those positions that I want to, at any cost, no matter what happens in the world, in town, what events they have to deal with, can operate the department as they see fit for their officers and how they best feel that they, what they need to do to keep the community safe. And I, again, am just not convinced that taking away protections that make them more vulnerable to the political process is what's best for the department and ultimately the town.
Can I withdraw my motion in light of the town manager's pretty much obstinate remarks that I was trying to put a compromise forward, and it's his way or the highway? So I'd like to rescind my motion and make a motion to move no approval on taking this position out of civil service.
Do you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion to, sorry, Mrs., I apologize. Mrs. Mahan, could you repeat your motion?
I was going to, I make a motion to, in spite of the town manager's request, motion of no action to remove the position from civil service.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I think we can see where this one is headed. So I guess we could drive all the way to a two to two vote, or we could table it until Mr. Kuro joins us.
I'd like to vote on my motion.
All right. Any further discussion before we take the vote? So we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan for no action, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right. We've got a two-two vote.
Motion fails.
Yeah, but then I will, I suggest we're going to put it back on the agenda for, provided the town manager still wishes, I will be happy to put it on the agenda for upcoming meeting.
I just want to say one thing, and I think Diane's long service to the town is, has given her many lessons that we should listen to. But I would say that the era now of the select board is not one of the kind of interference with the town manager's actions and the chief's actions that I saw in the past. I think this is a very different, the tenor of the select board is very different. And to me, it's a vast improvement. So I understand where you're coming from. I remember exactly what happened. But I don't think this is the same kind of board. And I know I won't be here in three months, but I have confidence that whoever is voted in to replace me will be a different kind of person from what I saw when I first ran for the board. And I think that that's, you know, we've had some really good people. We've had people that have been in roles that they shouldn't have been in. And I think that we are not allowing that anymore.
All right. So we've gone from a controversial issue to one really simple one. Discussion vote, 2019 debt exclusion and operating override.
Town manager.
I have been all over...
When you said one very non-controversial, I had a little snippy remark, but then you read something else.
I have, I have been all over the agenda tonight. I don't know why. Town manager's evaluation process. Mr. Chapdewin?
Well, I wish I'd put this one before the last one. So I put before the board a memo similar to what has been before the board in past years. I think, Mr. Hurd, it's likely the first time that you've seen the memo and the process. But what, again, sort of a twofold goal. One, to talk about the process, make sure the board is comfortable with the process and the metric or the rubric that we have attached, as well as being on board with the timeline that I've proposed in the memo. It follows similar to timelines in the past years, that would take basically a two-month process to go through the evaluation and have it completed in April. And the only reason, normally we would have a date in April, but we're setting dates tonight. So there's no April date for the board meeting in there.
So my first deadline for me to miss is March 11th.
Let's see, your first deadline is mine, and then this will just be you.
Yeah, let's see if I can not miss that this year.
Can I add something on the back end?
Yeah.
Just because I think, you know, in light of this previous discussion, this is in no way intended sarcasm, but I just want to make sure we don't fall into what we had in last year. It was brought to the then-board of selectmen's attention in terms of releasing the evaluation. We weren't advised of the correct way to do that. We were advised, but it was too late, and we'd already done it a different way. And we said, make sure we don't do this again next year. So I'd like to ask, you know, it was through the town manager and town council that brought it to our attention that when we get to the end, you were on the board, I think you know what I'm referencing. I don't want to have that mistake made again.
We'll manage it in compliance with the case law.
Well, I want to make sure we are, that's all.
Yeah. So that actually, so just to be clear then, the individual documents that we of our individual selectmen provide, we are going to pass those to the director of personnel. And there, and she will provide a compared document. And by that way, the individual doc, or sorry, collated document. And by that way, the individual documents will remain private, secret records. Did I get that right, Doug?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Also that there won't be this sense that there's been a closed meeting, or there's been a deliberation outside the scope, outside of an open meeting. So that's the other sort of piece of it, is that she will develop that. She'll take the individual evaluations and develop a sort of comprehensive one out of those documents.
Yes. Whereas the thing that we did last year that was, that required us to change process midway was that the chair had reviewed the individual ones, and that was the concern. So when you fill out your document, don't give it to me. Give it to Karen or Marie. And that way we, that way your document can stay private as opposed to being a public document.
But I just wanted it clear, and the reason I made those chastising remarks is that, while we may not have done it appropriately, we weren't counseled. But we, whatever we're told, at least what I'm told is the proper way to do a process by the people advising us, that's the way it goes. So it wasn't anything that we had knowledge of what we should do, and we didn't do it the right way. We got the knowledge afterwards, and that's why I'm bringing it up again tonight, so that we start doing it the right way from now on.
Okay. I did it. Last year I was on time, and I did it the right way.
Oh, no, no. It was at the, you went the back end.
I think the case came out after.
The advisory came out during our evaluation process. The new Attorney General's advisory on how to handle it came out after we had started.
We got the information at the very end of the process when we had filed everything. If we had gotten it in a timely fashion when you all got it, the situation, we just would have done it that way. But we're not going to do that this year.
Mrs. Mahan, I do not think that you are accurately relaying, and I think that we can move forward without assigning blame.
Point taken.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the town manager's evaluation process?
I'm looking forward to having just my own thoughts in one form. Steve Byrne and I did it together last year.
And that probably tripled the time.
No, we were pretty, we were on time. But Kevin will sit on my shoulder as I do it.
So is there a motion to adopt this as a process?
So moved.
Is there, moved by Ms. Rowe, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we'll get to an easy one. Discussion vote, 2019 debt exclusion and operating override. So my goal is, so I'm trying to drive us as a board and as a town towards a conclusion. And I think that through a series of meetings, we have reached a consensus, and I want to, and if we're not there, like, it's rubber meets the road time for us to identify that we're not there. So the process that I'd like to say is, and Joe, and Kuro and I have both stood on the Long Range Planning Committee, and he and I have talked about this with the Long Range Planning Committee, and we are on board with it, which is that we should do a vote for both an operating override and a debt exclusion for the high school on the same day. So my goal is, and do it this spring. I'm hoping that the board can have a candid conversation about that. And if we, I believe that we're at a place where we all agree with that. And if we're not, then I want to hear about it tonight. Then I would like, provided that I'm right and we have the votes, then I'm going to schedule a vote for us to take where we formally, as a board, adopt that as a, as an intent, which we'll do later on this month. And then, the way the timeframe works from there is that the, if the high school building committee moves on the schedule that it currently intends to, so this is, there's caveat here that future events could derail the schedule. But the schedule as of this date is that they would submit all their documents to the MSBA in February, that the MSBA board will meet and presumably, hopefully approve on April 10th. Then we will have a meeting subsequent to that, either April 15th or more likely, April 22nd. On April 22nd, we will take a formal vote to place two questions on the ballot, and we will set that vote for June 8th. And June 8th is chosen because June 1st is high school graduation, and June 15th is three days before the end of the school, or two days before the end of school. And frankly, as far as I'm concerned, cutting it too close. And so that's why I'd recommend June 8th.
Am I assuming June 8th is a Saturday?
Yes, sorry, those are all Saturdays.
And we bookend that week, before and after that, there are no holy days. I don't think there's anything in June, but I'll leave it for you guys.
I have not double-checked the June 8th holiday calendar, but just to be, I don't know of anything.
For every...
Yeah, I will double-check that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to make the case for why, like, that I've been making, you know, a series of conversations about why I think that there should be both votes on the same day. One vote is that, or one reason is, is that I think it is the way to have the most honest conversation with the voters. Because we need, we will need an operating override. Everybody knows it. The question is when. And if we do them both at the same time, I think that enables the clearest conversation about what the town's financial picture is, and saying, we're raising new taxes, and this is how much we've got to do it. Second reason to do it this way is because I want the questions to pass. And one of the things you need for pass is a good campaign. The way you get a good campaign is good volunteers. And if you try to do two campaigns on subsequent years, you get volunteer burnout. And I want to do it all in one day to manage volunteers. The third thing, reason is, is that if, as I hope it does not happen, but should the operating override fail, that would cause us, and I believe the town manager, to make specific choices about the budget, where we would start making cuts. Because we've got a pile of money in the bank right now. And if the town is not in the mood to approve operating overrides, then we need to change the service level to make that money last. And so that will be a painful process, but at the same time, it is much less painful than if we wait until the last minute. Because if we learn early that the town doesn't have the appetite to increase taxes more than two and a half percent, we can make it a slightly less painful process and then run subsequent attempts at an override once we make the case. And the last one is simply a question about good governance. And I have detected a certain amount of paralysis where people say things like, well, I don't want to do that right now because I'm worried that there's an override coming up, and I don't want to rock the boat. And I kind of want people to rock the boat a little bit. I want people to be innovative, and I want people to take risks. And I want to remove this hanging doubt. So I have talked a lot, which is, and first on an issue, which as chairman, I very, very rarely do. So thank you for indulging me. Who's first?
I agree with you. I think that there are a lot of steps we need to take. One of the first steps we need to take is what came out in public sessions earlier today. I think we need to explain the reason for the tax increases that we all just got in the mail. I think that will help. I also think that we need to think carefully about people that are my age. I'm not retired yet, but like that woman that spoke before, I will be on a fixed income. And this is a lot of money for me. I want to know how I can handle it. And I want, I was talking to Adam last week about having a forum like the one that Senator Donnelly did when I was a selectman for the seniors, to talk about what kinds of help there is for seniors in this town with this kind of increase. I think that's tremendously important. I'd also like to have a forum, we've had a lot of forums about the school building itself. I think there's still a lot of people who are not parents, who are, have lived in the town for a long time, that do not understand the $308 million figure. And they need to understand more about that besides the educational program. I think we've got the school parent community behind us. But I think we're what, with that big amount of money, and, you know, I've been looking at these schools that are being built around us that are very similar dollar amounts. This is not Newton North or South or whatever that was. We don't have climbing walls. But I think we need to present to the town, to people that are older, what that figure represents, that it needs to represent kind of a bare bones, not bare bones, but educationally correct, but really thoughtfully pared-down high school. If you can understand what I'm meaning. There's a lot of discussion about why are those offices going to cost the amount of money when they're not school-related? I think the school-related program, people understand. But why do we have, you know, the daycare center in there? Now, I understand that, but I don't think that other people do. And why do we have any school, any town offices in that building? And couldn't we bring that back to us? Put them in the basement here instead of the basement there? But I just, I think there's a lot of sort of talking we need to do that isn't necessarily just the educational program talking, if you understand what I'm saying. So I have real concerns. I'm an older person. I'm going to start retiring. I don't have a lot of money. I've done what I loved. It doesn't pay me a lot. And I want to keep living here. So I think we need to really sort of focus on what does $308 million give us? And can we bring it down?
Mrs. Mahan?
I just want to clarify some points, if you could.
Please.
Because I know I've had conversations with Chairman of Capital Planning, but I'm going to speak for myself personally. To me, the $308 million isn't fixed. I know myself and the person I spoke to on capital planning, our goal is to try to get that under $308 million. And we won't know until we go through the process that was cited, probably not until about April 10th, exactly what the cost of that school is.
That is my understanding as well.
So I want to make that clear to, you know, all the residents, voters, taxpayers, renters, that that 308, that's just what's there. I greatly anticipate it will reach my goal, which is under 300 million, if I'm speaking out of turn.
No, not, so if I, May, would you like me to? So two points. One, it actually cannot go over 308. The MSBA will not allow that. That is the maximum the project can be. So on that end, it's a cap. And we've also, we've already decided to move the facilities department out of the school, to move IT out of the school, and to move the comptroller out of the school. So those alone combined will reduce the budget, at least as we're looking at it right now significantly. significantly. We haven't announced budget reductions because we're still going, we're going out to cost estimation, and we'll get those further cost estimates two weeks from now, and that's when we'll have a clearer picture, but I know the entire committee, the school building committee shares the goals you just espoused of coming in with a number that is lower than the 308 million.
Yeah. And I would say any town offices that we are successful in moving out, because I know recently, like Adam Kay's area, anything we can save and salvage where it's kind of relatively no, and maybe we can't because of the topography of where they're going to. The other thing is, and correct me if I'm wrong, which is what I've been telling voters, the last time we went through a debt exclusion, we got 37% reimbursement, 37 cents on the dollar. So if you're looking at my ideal, you know, high 200 million or mid to high 200 million dollar school, the last time we went through MSBA, we only got 37 cents on the dollar. I'm hearing now, and nothing's guaranteed, we have to wait till April 10th or the dates that you cited, I'm hearing anywhere from 45 to 52.
Well, so there's two...
Or am I off? Has it changed?
No, 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 so there's two different, there's two different ways to look at it. So our base reimbursement rate as it stands today is 45.11%. Once we move forward with the process and we officially take on a construction manager at risk, we get a point for that, so it goes up by one. When we commit to our lead, our environmental sustainability goals, we get some points for that. So we will likely get up north of 47 reimbursement points. What, so that's the reimbursement figure. There's a second figure called the effective reimbursement rate, because everything we build isn't reimbursable. So there's, there's sort of these parallel analyses, and ultimately where we project we will be at is about a 35% effective reimbursement rate. So it actually, the Thompson, I think the Thompson's the last MSBA process we had, probably was something similar. I think our final close-out reimbursement rate from the Thompson from the MSBA was about 49%, but the effective reimbursement rate was in the realm of what you described, based on the square footage we built, that ultimately it wasn't reimbursable.
But as we do these presentations, if we can, A, describe that 308 million, what it truly is, and B, last time, we got less reimbursement, and it's my understanding that if we did slow the process down or stop it and start over, we could fall victim to not only falling out of line and going to the bottom of the, or the end of the list, we could not fare as well in terms of reimbursement, is that sort of what?
I think that is absolutely right.
That is 100% accurate, yes.
Okay. And then, I agree with Ms. Rowe, and as we all do in terms of having the forums, I know that when we do have these forums, when we're explaining what is 308 and what is reimbursement, if we can explain all the measures of relief for low fixed income senior citizens, maybe the senator on circuit breaker, because as you know, this board has, I think last year we did four new initiatives through Warren articles for people, and I don't think it was just for seniors, I think it was, you know, probably all of them applied to seniors.
Yeah, seniors, blind, disabled, correct.
Right.
Yeah.
But it upped the limits of the reimbursements.
Yeah. And then if there's anything we can do at this year's town meeting that to be explored, and then, here's my question, because I'm trying to think of people like we all are that came to the microphone and those sitting at home. I'm all for an override exclusion together, because I think it's, I think it's too confusing having two things happening, two separate dates, that doubles all the meetings that people have to go to to get the information. I think it's good condensed. What I'm looking to, and if the answer is, it hasn't been decided yet, to me, just thinking basic two plus two, and to me, the cost of the debt exclusion is pretty well fixed, when we get to that point, that number is what it is, and I just want to put this before you, are you proposing a three, four, or five-year override tonight? Because what I'm, here's what I've heard from the street, that, you know, why are you going for five years? You know, the last one Charlie Foskin and I worked on, I think we said it will last two to three years, and it lasted like seven or 10. So people are saying, instead of, you know, what I'm hearing is if you hit me with a huge override, especially where you've demonstrated that you've been good, I'm going to...
Good management.
Yeah, of overrides and stretched it out before, and where the debt exclusion is fixed, are you all at the point to say which scenario in terms of what override? We're not there yet.
I would, I think that now is a great time, I, that was not one of the points I was going to, like, I really wanted consensus on tonight.
Well, let's wait till Joe's here.
But if we got there, that'd be, we can wait till...
If you want, yeah, I'm sorry.
But if you've got a thought.
But that's my thing, is that we can kind of lower it on the back end of the overrides, but also get from the town manager and the chairman and Joe on Long Range Planning, what is the most reasonable, don't go cheap just to go cheap, you know what I mean, don't go less just to try to go cheap, just be appropriate, but...
I'll tell you, my...
But I'll wait till that we vote on that.
Yep, well, let me, you brought it up, it's a great question, and I want to answer. And so I have developed this very strong opinion that we should do two on the same day, and that I'm here to talk about and ask for your endorsement. I don't have the same level about the different things, about the different years. I definitely, my current thoughts are, I have a slight preference for the four-year, and if we're not the four, then I would choose three, and I don't have a lot of appetite for the, for the five. And that's my, but I would consider myself very persuadable on those points, I'm not at a conclusion.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurd?
Okay. Strictly in the sense of timing, I'm in agreement that I think both on the same day is the way to go. From a transparency standpoint, it just lets people know what they're voting on and what they're looking at for increases. Just to be clear, when we talk about both on the same day, or both, it would definitely be the debt exclusion this year, you'd be pushing the vote on the override out, and like you said, the debt exclusion's a little clearer to see to calculate right now for, for each individual family what that's going to be. They don't know what we're going to come to a conclusion on for the override, so to put them together, I think helps people know exactly what they're voting on, and it clarifies we, from a lot of people that this has now become a hot topic of discussion, for a lot of residents don't know what the difference between an override and a debt exclusion is, and this allows us to have a process that says, these are what you're voting on, this is an override, this is permanent, this, then the debt exclusion's specific for one, one...
End date.
One project, and it goes from there. And I think with that, and then just from a campaigning standpoint, it's going to be a lot easier to coordinate one campaign, because you can get campaign fatigue if you ask people to push for the override, and then a year later say, oh, come back for another three months and stand outside in the cold to push for the debt exclusion, and you also run the risk of tax hike fatigue for people that vote for the debt exclusion and then say, hey, come on, I just, I just, we just did this last year, you know, and then they didn't, wait, oh, wait, I thought that's what we voted on, what are we voting on now? So having on the same day just increases transparency, and I think that's the way to go.
Thank you.
And one of the things, having been very involved in the last debt exclusion campaign, one of the things that was really helpful was the chart where people could put in their existing tax rate and understand for them personally what the tax increases would mean. And I think that that's tremendously important. I think the amount of money that people are talking about needs to be verified and carefully done. And six months is not a very long campaign time, I will mention to you.
Oh, yeah.
Then you'll be the chair, I believe.
I believe that's the plan.
Yeah.
Ms. Mahan?
First procedurally, what I'd like to do, but I, I can't recall in my head if an override exclusion vote has to be a sole vote, I kind of want to cite the four dates you did, or...
Yeah, I think actually...
Which way would you prefer me to go?
I actually, I actually don't think I need a vote tonight.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, sorry.
I wanted people to say, you know, say what their mind was, and I got to the place I needed, which is, you know, everyone present has said, let's do two dates and says that those dates are okay, and so I think what I'd like to do is that the next meeting is to come forward with a, I'm going to write up something a little more formal that says that the board intends to, and, because we can't actually do the ballot vote, right, until April. So, but we can certainly make our intent crystal clear, and I think, I want to put it, I think what my plan is to put in some parameters because, that are about saying that like, when we do it, the vote is going to include a commitment to the number of years, and it's going to include some other additional guarantees, and we, as a board, are going to do this series of forums and hearings and things like that, that, like, I want to outline what the, what kind of what the next five months are going to look like, and then get us to approve that.
Okay, so is that, my goal is, and I'm asking you as chair, because I'm thinking this might be premature, but I was going to say, I was going to make a request tonight that the minutes include pretty much the totality of your remarks where you outline the timing process, or do you want to wait for that when you nail it down at the next meeting?
Let's push it to the...
I kind of want that in the minutes, though, when it is determined?
Let's push it to the next meeting.
Okay, then I took all these notes for nothing.
All right, yeah, I got them.
Okay.
Anyone else want to, or are you, are you good? Okay. All right, so I've reached the end of, I appreciate everyone's thoughts, that is where I thought we were, but I needed to get it, and I needed to get it in an open meeting. Everybody good on that one? I'm going to move on. All right, future select board meetings.
Oh, this is a controversial one, oh, boy.
Uh, let's see. So I actually had sketched some dates already into my calendar. So we can't meet the 21st because that is Martin Luther King Day. We could, and the warrant, Adam, do you want to tell me about the warrant on the 25th? What's that?
So the town meeting warrant closes on the 25th.
Okay, and we need to meet again before then?
Board usually meets to consider various articles that might be placed.
All right. So I had actually thought that this was all going to be super easy and straightforward, you know, we're going to just say that, that we, that we're going to do the 28th, and so if we need to meet before the 25th, we could meet a week from today, but the problem with that is that's two weeks before the 25th, or we could meet the 23rd.
Well, I thought, I thought we already set meeting dates at your request for the 14th and, back at our last December meeting, we set for the 7th, the 14th, and 28th.
Oh, did we?
I'm not saying we have to stick to those, but...
The 14th is the high school community forum.
So do you want to move the 14th?
Well, the other thing is, do we actually, Ashley, do you have any sense of what our agenda is later in the month? Are there, in terms of items that are coming up and stuff? Like, kind of what I'm asking is, do you think we need to meet once or twice?
I mean, I think we'd be okay with once.
Okay. Yeah, and so I agree, we do not want to step on the 14th, I hadn't really thought about that.
Well, I can't do anything on the 22nd. If we, so we're firm on the 28th, we're meeting on the 28th, correct?
I would...
Because we've already voted it in, so we...
And then the only question is whether we need to meet before, if we need to get a meeting in on the warrant before then. And that's just to, Adam, that's just to decide things that we need to add that are requests from the board. I think we should do the 23rd, maybe.
Yes, let's do the 23rd.
Okay.
Same time, 7:15?
Yep.
Okay. So 23 and 28.
I thought it was all going to be straightforward.
Dream on.
I know. And then do we want to keep the 28th at that point? The nice thing about...
Let's just keep it.
We can keep it, and you can announce on the 23rd.
Let's keep the 28th, and then let's do the 11th, sorry, February 11th.
Okay, so we're getting rid of the 14th.
Yes. Yes, not the 14th, yes, the 23rd. So we're going to meet on the 23rd, the 28th of this month. Then in February, that falls pretty easily on the 11th and the 25th.
Yeah. Yeah, because you don't want anything school vacation week, which I think is the week of the 17th.
I don't, I had not gotten to the school vacation part, but definitely the 18th is President's Day, so I'd definitely put it out on that basis.
School vacation, okay. All right, so 11:25?
Everybody ready to keep going?
Yep.
I know when I'm doing this, I'm like, I cheated and I put all the dates in beforehand, otherwise I'm like madly trying to get them in to my date. So that takes us to, oh, but I didn't go this far evidently, the 25th, March 11th, and then the 25th. And the thing that's kind of nice about the 25th is that that's essentially two weeks before election, because I know Marie and others get really crazy in the week before the election, but we also have the flexibility, if we're behind in warrant hearings, to put in a meeting on the 18th or April 1st if we need it.
That's what I was going to say, okay, so we have a tentative backup plan.
We have, yeah, and we should also set the...
And it's April 1st day, so we...
So perfect, yeah. And we should also set the date for April 8th, which Ms. Rowe does not have to put into her calendar.
Thank you very much.
Except, it will still be my intention to appoint you to...
Thank you.
CPC?
CPC on that date, if the town manager chooses to appoint you.
Only one vote.
But you have to make the nomination.
That's right, you're right, you're right.
All right, so we've got our dates. Everybody content? Ashley, you got them?
Yes.
All right. Correspondence received, concerns regarding Pond Lane from Rebecca Garash, call for project concepts from Mark Drazen, and breakfast kickoff invitation from Mark Drazen.
Move receipt. Second.
Motion is second, any discussion of referrals? All those, sorry, yep.
I'd refer, I'd recommend that the board refer number 11 to the planning department, to our senior transportation planner. The assistant town managers looked at this area before, so we should, Dan should be able to build on that research. It's a tricky combination of public and private ways in that area, but, but I think this resident's observations are entirely accurate, and solutions should be looked at.
This is sort of new business, but while we're on Pond Lane, there is a disputed project at 47th by Pond Lane, as you know. I went by that house, and it's open to the elements, and I think it really should be, I mean, there are kids in there all the time, there's, I just, I think somebody from the DPW should go look at it, I don't think it's safe.
Okay.
That's the one right near the parking lot, when you come under the bridge with the pond behind you.
You're talking about Spy Pond Lane?
Spy Pond Lane.
This is Pond Lane.
Oh, I know, I'm...
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking, no, because there is something going on on Pond Lane, and I'm like, oh, did I not see it?
No, I'm talking about Spy Pond Lane, sorry.
I apologize, okay.
So we have, we're going to refer that one, any other, so we had a motion from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Ms. Rowe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, new business. Ashley?
No new business.
Doug?
Mr. Chairman, I have one piece of new business. The legislature has approved the amendments to the Town Manager Act at the report of the last town meeting. I want to thank Sean Garbely, Representative Sean Garbely, Senator Cindy Friedman, and Derek Keenan from, Representative Garbely's staff, who worked substantially on the bill. The governor's office has yet to sign it, they'd like to go over a few things, but we're almost there, and they've got, I think, seven days to approve it. So I'm going to plan to speak with them tomorrow, and we should be all set. So that'll cover everything from gender-neutral language to changes in finance director position, the creation of the finance department, so it'll all be in effect at the end of next year.
That's on the select board, too, right?
Yeah.
Select board, yes.
So I have three items, two short, one that's a little bit longer. First one is Chief Ryan's retirement reception will be held this Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the O'Neill Room in the Community Safety Building, so that's an open invite to both town employees as well as the public to come by and be able to wish Fred farewell before he goes.
Push him out the door.
Push him out. Second is, as the board I'm sure is aware, the town manager's budget submission is due January 15th, so we're working towards that date next week, but we will come back on the 23rd and at that board meeting, provide a budget overview as we've done in years past of some of the details, details that are contained in the budget. The lengthier item that I wanted to try to quickly address is what I'm sure the board and many people at home have seen in the news, both on television news and as well as in the Globe, regarding the homelessness issue down in the Ale-Wife area. So the short story is that that's been a longstanding concern in town, the homelessness issue in, in the general Ale-Wife area. This, this board has dealt with it internally, we've dealt with it in staff, we've worked with other communities, so it's not a new issue this year. This year in particular, though, it was brought to the town's attention of a large, large encampment within the Mugar property, within the wooded area of the Mugar property, with a great deal of debris as well as a large number of hypodermic needles that were, that were just strewn about on the ground, which raised public health and public safety concerns. So with the leadership of Health and Human Services Department and the Police Department, we put together a team of a police officer and one of our public health agents to go and start to work with the people that were living in that area. We then started to build a relationship with Cambridge and their very well-resourced homelessness team within their Cambridge Police Department, and leverage the resources that we have through the Somerville Homeless Coalition that we are a part of, it's called the Coalition or Coalition... the Coalition or Continuum of Care that the town is a part of. So we started working with those, working with that population. At some point, the hypodermic needles, not, not by our efforts, but the hypodermic needles were cleaned up out of the Mugar area, and that made a lot of the people who were living there disperse, often when, when there's fear of some type of, you know, governmental presence coming in, the folks who are living in a particular area will disperse. A good number of those people started to shelter under the overpass, under Route 2. And over the course of the end of the summer and into the early fall, there became really a large accumulating amount of debris, human waste, there was a colostomy bag, further hypodermic needles gathering under that area. So we continued to work with that coalition, as I described, as well as talking with Mastot, who has jurisdiction over the underpass. That discussion started with talking about how we could handle the wasted debris that were piling up, and we began working with our DPW to empty trash barrels that we'd put out, but talking with Mastot about what some longer-term strategies could be. Unfortunately, through poor or miscommunication, the long-term strategy that Mastot implemented was the placement of bird strips or bird spike strips at the top of the underpass to prevent people from sleeping there. At the point they installed them, the people who were sleeping there had already vacated to sleep in various areas, most of them likely availing themselves to shelters in the region, but there was no, there was no one sleeping there at the time they were installed. We found out these were installed in mid to late December, and as I said to the television news today, I'll say to you, I was shocked when I heard the spikes were the chosen solution that Mastot installed. So we, this first started to become more of a public discussion last week, and at the end of last week, we had asked Mastot to remove the spikes. The initial response was tepid at best about the removal, but after further conversations this morning, they immediately removed the spikes, and they're already removed today, so that they're gone. Going forward, we're going to continue to work in the cooperative collaborative effort that we have with Cambridge and Somerville, with our own Health and Human Services Department and the Police Department, to reach out to the people who do live down in that specific area, but we're also going to work to populate the homelessness task force that this board approved two years ago, so that we can broaden the dialogue with community stakeholders as well as our internal resources, talk about what the right level of resources are that we want to think about directing towards this issue, as well as what the right policies are in Arlington. So this has sort of all been, you know, something that got very loud very fast, but I think coming out of today, we have a good way to look forward, spikes have been removed, we have good efforts that have been in place and will continue them, and will broaden the dialogue so that the larger Arlington community can get involved with what the right solutions are.
Ms. Mahon.
I want to thank the town manager for clarifying that, because I was so shocked and surprised when I saw what was done and where it was done, because I know that, and I want to commend the town manager and the Police Department and Board of Health, we all received as the manager, I want to say late spring, early summer, a lot of East Arlington residents concerned about, A, the encampments out there on the Mugar site.
Yes.
There was never anything under Route 2, so that's why I was, I couldn't understand, and I kind of feel like that being the story highlighted, didn't really highlight what's been going on out there, because I know Mrs. Bonjorno and Representative of Police Department and Mr. Chaplin and others have been going out there pretty faithfully, not just to kick people out, but to talk to them, talk to them, the circumstances, make sure you bring an appropriate person, I know sometimes if you need Rebecca from the Police Department in terms of any emotional issues, and really, not working to kick them out, but working to get them to somewhere safer, and I really thought it was a great tool that you used involving the city of Cambridge, who does have a lot more funds than we do, and I commend you and wouldn't say don't involve Mass DOT in the future, in spite of what happened here, but my question would be, and this has nothing to do, because I kind of feel like all those efforts that were started back in late spring, that's what got high, you know, the place that we weren't focusing on with the solution we didn't ask for is kind of what got highlighted, and all that was lost in the mix. Is there, as a result of this, or can we in the future, or the answer's just no, because I don't want to discourage the town manager or any of your department heads to go to Mass DOT or anybody else, but is there, or can there be some conversation in the future? We want to continue on these partnerships, but there's some sort of a, so none of us are surprised that this happens? Some sort of interface, even if it's an email between someone from Mass DOT and you, or however you want to work that out in the future? I don't want to say don't ever use them again, as I say, because this is what they did, but that's what you should do.
It's their bridge, that's the problem.
Yeah, no, and I, you're very well said, I think we, sometimes when things like this happen, even though there's upset initially, the second breath tells you that we have to redouble our efforts to work with them, so because of the nature of this, I ended up talking with the Secretary of Mass DOT's Chief of Staff today, and they're very interested in continuing the conversation and finding what the right strategies are, so again, it's unfortunate that things get elevated by, you know, bad things instead of positive efforts, but I think continuing to talk with them is critical to moving forward on this.
I'll just, I want to also say that, so I got a call from a reporter on the Globe on Sunday afternoon about this, and the thing that I was able to emphasize with them repeatedly is that this is something we've been, like, this isn't, we've been engaged on this issue for a while, and I, and we traced it back in particular from, like, to the incidents we had 2015, and then in 2016, at least, we had the conversation about a camping bylaw, which we, which we didn't execute, but it also launched a series of discussions and a series of efforts by the town, and I said, don't, I was able to tell him, you can't look at this just at this one thing, you have to look at what the big picture is and how we have been engaged on this issue for, you know, months, for months, yeah.
I mean, they used to, I mean, as Adam said, the homeless population moves around the Aleweith reservation, and they used to be really close to the station in the Cambridge Park, there's one, there was a camp, and they, you know, were moved out of there, and then they started moving into the Mugar site, I mean, I've just watched it because that's my route, it's been all over the reservation, it's right, it's very close to Aleweith, so that's, and it's open space, and that's where homeless people live.
I was, there was one thing, the reporter, like, at least four times asked me, he's like, what's the one thing that Arlington should be doing to solve this problem?
Oh, hello.
And I refused to answer that question, because it was just, there was, there was no win there.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know...
Well, I mean, we, we have a role to play, and we have work to do, but it's not specifically an Arlington problem.
Yep.
It's a regional issue that, that we have to partner on to solve, or solve is probably even the wrong word, to address.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Ms. Rowe.
I'm new, so I have almost no new business. I took my ethics exam last night.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, and I thought, it really is too bad that it's only in Little Arlington, Massachusetts, that you have to take the ethics training, because I could see people in my hometown benefiting from some of the hour-long information that I read, but...
Or maybe even, maybe even the top job in the land could take it, God bless you.
You digress.
So that's no new business, really.
That's Mahon.
And I'll have further conversations with the chair and the town manager, I just want to keep this on my mental tickle file, but it also has to be mindful of a possible June debt exclusion override, but I'm beating a dead horse on this, only because I've been working on this ever since the schools did their own version of the fake audit, which got into the audit that Power, that the Mass DOR did, that came out with all the recommendations, majority for school side, some for town side, which we've all but pretty much implemented on the town side, and it's always been, from my understanding, when we went down this, and which is why I kind of dropped back an appointed versus an elected treasurer, that the end goal is ultimately consolidated town and school finance department, or whatever that entity would be. I've seen the town consistently make efforts moving towards that goal, and I don't mean any disrespect, but I haven't seen anything from the school side, so I'm not going to put this on you, but please relay the conversation. My question would be that I'll discuss with both of you further is, I mean, I'd like to, I don't know if we can get something in this year's town meeting in terms of warrant articles, I don't know what, if any, positive, negative impacts that could have on a June exclusion override vote, if we so vote that way, but I'd really like to, I did speak with the previous treasurer, Mr. Carmen, and I know he's put failures out, but I just keep hearing crickets everywhere, so, so no need for an answer tonight, but I'll make sure within the next week, because I'd like to start moving on it now, but I don't want to do anything, I won't just buy the argument that it could hurt an exclusion override vote, but I, it could, and I don't want to be reckless, so, but I still want to go there.
The good news is I can say I was working on that DOR report and looking at it in December. I have not touched, I have not touched it this year, but it's, it's still pretty high on my list, so I will, I'll get, I will work on that more. Mr. Hurd.
Just one thing, just to follow up to new business I had about a month ago, is we finally got some cold weather. While everyone else was enjoying the mild 60-degree weather, I was waiting for 20 degrees.
Cold front, cold front.
So we put the rank in today, I watched, thank you to everyone that helped.
Good job.
Mike Corney from Corney Landscaping, Town Manager, I was glad that John Marshall got to come down and see it, because he was a big help in getting that done before he scoots off to Belmont, and thank you to the fire department, who came down and built it.
We got water today?
Oh, nice, nice. So the water is a little brown, there was a...
Didn't drink it before.
So I think it got clearer as we got, and they looked to me to make an executive decision whether I wanted to come back and ask for another $1,000 to bring in water, and I said, no. So we are sparing the town some money up on this board. So we'll see how the final, I think, once it freezes, it will look fine, but, so we're just going to be watching the weather for an open date, so stay tuned.
Awesome.
Hopefully it'll be in the next week.
That's cool.
Kumski.
All right, I do not have any new business.
Move to a chair. Second.
Second.
Is that okay?
Yep, it totally is, I was, I was stuck in my head, like, because I generally say when the next meeting is, and I have, like, I've already failed, I've already, 1/23. All right, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, our next meeting is January 23rd, next regular meeting.